Welcome to the City Council Meeting Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. I'd like the clerk to read the roll, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Baranko?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
McCorris?
Here.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Here.
Here.
Tenhaiken?
For our invocation tonight with Reverend Dr. Christina O'Hara from the Church of the Good Shepherd, we'll give her invocations. I'd ask everybody to please rise for that. Still stay standing for the pledge of allegiance.
This is a blessing from John O'Donohue for one who holds power. May the gift of leadership awaken in you as a vocation, keep you mindful of the providence that calls you to serve. As high over the mountains the eagle spreads its wings, may your perspective be larger than the view from the foothills. When the way is flat and dull in times of gray endurance, may your imagination continue to evoke horizons. When thirst burns in times of drought, may you be blessed to find the wells. May you have the wisdom to read time clearly and know when the seed of change will flourish. In your heart, may there be a sanctuary for the stillness where clarity is born. May your work be infused with passion and creativity and have the wisdom to balance compassion and challenge. May your soul find the graciousness to rise above the fester of small mediocrities. May your power never become a shell wherein your heart would silently atrophy. May you welcome your own vulnerability as the ground where healing and truth join. May integrity of soul be your first ideal, the source that will guide and bless your work. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Or can I get a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, second by Jensen, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion is passed eight to zero. Onto our regular agenda.
Move approval. Jensen.
Second call.
Any discussion? Hearing none. I've got a motion by Jensen, second by Cole. Can we have a roll call to approve, please?
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion is passed eight to zero. Before we continue with the regular agenda, I'd like to review the public input for agenda items. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case the public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. During the general public input portion of our meeting, comments will with no more than three minutes per person, and comments are limited to topics that do not involve agenda items appearing earlier in the agenda, as comments will already have been received for those items. Our next items will include alcohol licenses, so let me explain a few things before we get started. First, items thirty-one to thirty-eight will be read for consideration. Once they are read, I will invite any interested citizens to speak on items thirty through thirty-one. After public testimony, I'll ask council members to disclose any information they received prior to the hearing, which may influence their decision tonight. After those discussions, citizens will be invited to speak in response to those disclosures. We will run the timer during public comment, but as chair, I can use my discretion unless overwritten by the council. Move on to our next item, please.
Next item, item thirty-one through thirty-eight are items deferred from the meetings of Tuesday, August sixteenth, 2022, and September thirteenth, 2022. Item thirty-one, new twenty-two twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino thirteen sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite one oh one, with conditional use permit one six-five six-nine dash twenty-two being approved on July sixth, 2022, pending final inspections for health and building services. Item thirty-two, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-two twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino thirteen sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite one oh one. Item thirty-three, new twenty-two twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino thirteen point two-five sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite one oh two, with conditional use permit one six-five six-nine dash twenty-two being approved on July sixth, 2022, pending final inspections for health and building services. Item thirty-four, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-two twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino thirteen point two-five sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite one oh two. Item thirty-five, new twenty-two twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino thirteen point five sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite one oh three, with conditional use permit one six-five six-nine dash twenty-two, being approved on July sixth, 2022, pending final inspections for health and building services. Item thirty-six, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-two twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino thirteen point five sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite one oh three. Item thirty-seven, new twenty-two twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino thirteen point seven-five sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite one oh four, with conditional use permit one six-five six-nine dash twenty-two, being approved on July sixth, 2022, pending final inspections for health and building services. And item thirty-eight, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-two twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino thirteen point seven-five sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite one oh four.
Thank you. Go ahead. Jamie?
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with licensing, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have for items thirty-one through thirty-eight. The applicants for all of these items, attorney is present if you have any questions for him.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would wish to speak on these items?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Drew Duncan. I'm an attorney at Duncan Law Firm. I represent Commonwealth Gaming and for the purposes of the next eight agenda items, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I kind of figured I'd make a couple of comments before because I would assume maybe it'll short-circuit some questions, or maybe I'm just hopeful it'll short-circuit some questions. And I apologize for the glasses, but without them, I'm not looking down my nose at anyone, but without them, I cannot see a thing. Again, Drew Duncan representing here representing Commonwealth Gaming. It was a pleasure to meet with, you know, I know most of you, and now I know, I think, all of you, and it's a pleasure to meet with most of you at our Forty-first and Ellis locations. The applicants are here for licenses and a yet-to-be-built structure on the northeast corner of Sixty-ninth and Cliff. Again, that structure is not built yet. They don't usually build those structures until they, or if it's new construction, they don't usually build those structures until they get authority from the council for the beer and wine license and for the video lottery terminals. My understanding that this has passed CUP process without objection or with minimal objection, I'm not positive which one, but I do not believe that there was a significant outcry amongst the public with regards to these four licenses at that location. You know, I've spoken to most of you before about how this process works. I understand that it's a difficult process and it's cumbersome in some ways. And I clearly understand as we work through these issues for these licenses, it's not always as clean as it would be. But I'll just mention to everyone again, as it relates to my clients, I am an open door, and we are happy, they are an open door. We are only a phone call away, and we're happy to talk with you at any time you want about any of our existing locations or our license applications. Again, most of you know my clients. You know Commonwealth Gaming. You know Deuces Casino. You have visited their locations. I believe that they meet the suitable person, suitable location standard. They have other establishments in town, as I mentioned. They're well-run. They do not operate as bars, as many of you have seen. They do not have, you know, spots there for, you know, patrons just to come in and drink. I understand that some of you have some questions with regards to forty-two seven eight sixty-four of the South Dakota Code and some of the criteria that you guys can consider for additional or for on-sale beverage license and video lottery license establishments. I suggest to you, with regards to those, you know, South Sioux Falls continues to grow. There's still an economic need. That's why these locations continue to go in in the city of South Dakota. I've explained that to most of you. That's criteria one. Criteria two, proximity to others. I don't believe there's significant video lottery in that area of town or other bars or restaurants in that area of town where it would be a significant amount of only one, you know, licensed casino there. You know, the business and the manner in which the applicant proposes to operate it, again, most of you have seen it. You've seen how this operations work. They're clean. They're secure. They do not let in minors. You know, you've seen the locations. They meet the ordinance in, we believe, any every way. The location of business in regard regards to other business and residential areas, again, seems appropriate. We have many other locations that look, and most other video lottery establishments have the same sort of criteria in the same type of places. This is not a place in which minors frequent a business. This, we would not let in minors. We do not let in minors. We have security on those places. And the effect proposed business has on economic development, I would suggest to you again, as I have to many of you, that this is definitely an economic positive. It provides tax revenue and money for the state and the city. It's developing street corners in our community. Whether we necessarily love gambling or not, we are putting taxes into the community, and we are developing street corners, along with some of the jokes we made with regards to car washes and the other only things that are putting in those type of locations here. We would ask you to approve the four license applications. I'd be happy to stand by for questions. You've got, I think some of you have seen a business plan for this location that's that was provided at the request of Jamie Palmer. That's not a final. That is not met building services, but that will be something close to what the location will look like. Again, happy to stand by for questions, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input on this item? Counselor, let's talk about disclosures. Anybody have any disclosures they'd like to make? Counselor Jensen?
I spoke to the applicant's attorney.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? Counselor Baranko?
Yes, I also had a conversation with the applicant's attorney. We discussed Nebraska Cornhuskers football, as well as some of the rules and laws pertaining to this application.
Counselor Cole?
I would like to disclose that I participated in a tour of the Crown Casino located at Ellison Forty-first Street, September first, 2022. The applicants and their legal counsel led the tour. Thank you.
Counselor Knightzer?
I had a discussion with the applicant's attorney by phone. I also took part in the tour of the Ellis Road location, and I also had a conference call with myself and a few city staff with the lottery director and peer and three of his staff members, where we talked about the declaratory rulings and state law interpretation.
Thank you. Any other? Counselor McCaras?
Mr. Chairman, I toured the facility near Forty-first and Ellis Road, also had a meeting with lottery commission member to understand state regulation.
Thank you. Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was on the same tour on Forty-first and Ellis, spoke with Mr. Mylenberg, and I believe I had a discussion with Mr. Duncan, but I don't remember on this one or not. But definitely, the applicant has been very open and willing to share their plans for the licenses they're requesting tonight.
Would anyone from the public like to discuss the disclosures that were just made? Seeing none, let's get a motion on the books so that we can have the discussion. Counselor Knightzer?
To get us started, I'm going to make a motion to approve items thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-five, and thirty-seven.
Second call.
Thank you, Mr. Knightzer. Would you like to discuss your motion?
Yeah. So the reason I'm making this motion is this constitutes the four alcohol licenses, which are, we are up for consideration, and the reasons for which that we can vote on these pursuant to state law are different than the video lottery. So I wanted to separate that, so we could just talk about the approval of the malt beverage license first.
Any other discussion on this topic? Counselor Knightzer?
Well, so we have suitable location and suitable person. Those are pretty cut and dry. I am going to approve these with, and I'll talk more about it later, that I do have some qualms, and I have a good relationship with them as it relates to the suitable person standard, only because I have six years of experience of the applicant, in my opinion, pushing the envelope and twisting our ordinance and state law into a pretzel. And so I do have concerns about that. I don't know that it quite rises to the level where I can vote no, but I do want to put that on the record that I am troubled.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll get a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes eight to zero. Counselor Knightzer, do you have another motion?
Move to approve items thirty-two and thirty-four.
There's a second?
Second call.
Counselor Knightzer?
These are the first two video lottery licenses, and I think for some, there may be an appetite to talk about approving potentially two and having a discussion about that, but we weren't sure, and we wanted to hear the testimony and have some discussion with the applicant's attorney. So we just wanted flexibility here. No decision made yet. We just need to hear a few things.
Further discussion? Counselor Jensen?
I have a question for Counselor Knightzer. Are these, so like, Suite one oh one and one oh two are the ones that are being discussed, and if the vote comes down, are these the suites that they would recommend? If the decision is to only have two, would these be the only, would these be the ones they'd want?
So if I could, Mr. Chair, I did have a discussion with Mr. Duncan, and it sounded like it, but I wouldn't mind if he maybe would opine, if we could ask him to opine. If there was only two, would these be the two?
Would you like to address that?
With the caveat that it could be all four tonight, we don't know. But if it was just two?
Councilman Sale, Councilman Knightzer, yeah, I think that you could fit whatever two were approved into that particular location, yeah.
Thank you.
I guess the better answer to that question is, I don't know that it matters.
Other discussion? Counselor Knightzer?
Mr. Duncan, before you go too far, sorry. So I do have some questions. First of all, for this facility, how many employees will you have on staff typically at one time?
Chairman Knightzer, at any one time, it could be anywhere from one or more.
At your Ellis facility and other ones, it's typically usually one, would that be?
Yeah, one or more. As you saw when you were there, for the three locations that are currently there, the first time we were there, we had one, and we had four patrons. The second time, there was two, and there was nearly, I would say, twenty-five patrons. But in fairness, one of the employees was a trainee.
How will the one employee keep alcohol secure? With the four licensed premises? Just to talk about your security plan and how that's done.
Mr. Chairman, the way that the way that the security at these locations work and the way that the alcohol delivery works at these locations is fairly simple. There are locked doors at every in and out, and someone has to buzz you in in order to get into these locations at certain times of the day, usually that we don't lock the doors until later in the afternoon. But oftentimes, the doors are locked. Every, all, no one under the age of twenty-one is allowed inside. That is, you know, that's state law, and that's what we have always abided by. Alcohol is served by whoever our employee is on location at the time. Alcohol cannot be moved from one location to another. That's state law. So if you get a drink or a bottle of beer in one of the locations, in one of the ten location, ten terminal locations, you cannot take it to the other. That will be maintained. Alcohol is stored generally in coolers behind the bar, just like any other location in town. Our access is stored in a locked storage room, as many of you have seen, and that's really generally how that happens, how that works.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I could continue. Employee's safety and securing of alcohol is important. Will be people be able to enter and exit each of your exterior exits at any time?
No, we discussed that, Mr. Chairman. We discussed that earlier. Those doors lock. So you have, they have to get buzzed in. Someone has to get buzzed in. Now to go out, someone can go out, but they cannot go in, generally.
Will you have seating at the bar?
Mr. Chairman, I can't speak to every location that we have. I want to say we have no seating at any bars anywhere. We usually don't even have a bar. We usually have a countertop. Sometimes there's a chair pulled up there. Quite often, there's not. We will, we generally do not have seating at a bar, no.
Can someone come in and just get a drink?
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Knightzer, that's a great question. That does not happen. That is not the way we usually serve it. We do not sell alcohol at these locations. Can you come in and get a drink and not play? I suppose you could, but you will not get a second, if you're not playing.
And you were at the Ellis Road location. Were you there when your applicant or your client told a number of us that somebody would probably be asked to leave if they did that?
Mr. Chairman, yes. As I said, I don't think you'd get a second.
Okay. In 2019, we had a discussion about two licensed premises. You remember that law that we, to make the more openings and things like that, to share the coolers?
Yeah. Councilman Sale, yes, I remember. I'm sorry. Old habits from the legislature die hard. We answer our questions to the chairman. If you don't want me to do that, just tell me to shut up and move on.
Just go ahead and address the question.
Okay. I apologize. Thanks.
You're doing great.
You gotta, can you repeat the question?
Yeah. So I was just asking if you recall, in 2019, we had the ordinance that had to do with the sharing of the coolers and the hallways and stuff like that.
Yes, I remember it vividly.
Now, you recall that we talked about, and I asked you, and others, I think, asked you, this is about two. And in fact, you said there would be no proliferation and that you had no intention of doing more than three or four. So why are we doing four now?
Councilman Knightzer, I don't remember exactly what my comments were at the time. As I told you last week on the telephone, and as I would tell anyone who asked, in 2019, it was not our intention to move to three, to four, to five, to six locations. As I spoke to my clients about that since, we were not the first locations to do, we weren't the first owners to do that after 2019. Quite frankly, it was not my intention then. I didn't envision it then. Others did. They beat us to the punch, and they started that, and my clients followed suit. But I want to be abundantly clear. If we would have figured it out before the others would, we probably would have been there. Does that twist the intent of the law? Does that twist it into a pretzel, or does that make them unsuitable? I don't believe it does. I don't know that the characterization is necessarily fair.
So would you agree that these four premises are four different businesses?
Yes, they would be separate and distinct according to declaratory ruling ninety-six, as we discussed last week.
Would you have an objection to putting up the preliminary?
Yes, I would. It's proprietary information.
Okay.
Counselor Knightzer, could we get some other questions in, and we'll circle back to you if there are no others. Other council members' questions? Counselor McCaras?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The manner of operation of the facility where there's four distinct businesses, walk us through security. If I'm working as a customer and one corner of one of the establishments conversing, interacting with them, how do I respond if the person that's on the other establishment hands a, takes a drink of alcohol to a student outside the door or lets somebody else in? How's that? How is four secured?
To a student outside the door?
If a minor, if I'm over on this section, I got a separate business over here, how am I controlling that this person's not allowing a minor into the facility?
The locked doors.
So a guest could not open that for a minor?
I suppose a guest could open that for a minor, but as, you know, as we showed, and as we, in all of our facilities, I think at the T Ellis Road location, and I'm going to screw up the actual number, but I think it's ninety-six cameras in those locations. There's monitors behind nearly every bar. Our, I'm sure our employees do rove the establishments and talk to customers, but their number one priority is making sure that alcohol is not leaving those establishments. That's state law. That's what we do. That's no different than a bar. It wouldn't be any different than, you know, you going to any licensed establishment here in town, getting a beer from a bartender and walking right out the door with it. The difference between those locations and ours is we have locks on our door now. They don't. I think you actually can stop people from going out. We don't generally do that. The other, you know, important function in that is the fact that people don't come to our locations just to drink. I mean, that is really not what's happening there. And I think the tours show that, and I would hope that that's a differentiation we can make for that. I don't, and I'm not positive we've ever had a situation where a student or someone under the age of eighteen has got beer out of a doorway before. And I understand that's just an example, but, and I'm sure I'm wrong about that, but I can't remember one from the top of my head.
Other questions? Counselor Baranko?
More in the nature of a statement. You know, I feel like we may have drifted a little bit from what the law is, what the intent of the legislature was, but I'd really like to invite Mr. Duncan and other folks. I think that in the coming weeks and months, we should probably take a look at what we're doing, make some refinements there so that we're not surprising businesses, we get some good, clear rules, and also I think it'd be a great idea for us to cooperate with the state legislature and maybe see if we can incite them to give us a little bit more clear rules as well. But I do think that this is a situation where, you know, we've got a business that provides a service in our community that's desired, and I think we have allowed ourselves to get into a situation where there's some vagueness on what the rules are, what they ought to be.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Knightzer, you want to wrap it up?
Yeah, I have a couple of final questions, and I'm going to need Jim David for that. You could bring up either one of the rulings. We can do either one. And Mr. Duncan, I'm sure you're very well familiar with the two lottery rulings, which I'm going to ask you about. Maybe. Mr. Duncan, I actually have, I'm sorry. So here's where I'm struggling. So lottery ruling ninety-three dash one, first one, location of video lottery machines in bars and lounges. So you just told us earlier that we're not a bar. We don't have places for people to sit. But the ruling states, for purposes of licensing a business location, is a video lottery establishment and must first meet the definitional requirements of a bar or lounge. It must include within the premises an area where malt beverages or wine are sold, dispensed, and consumed in the ordinary course of business. And then, another important part, the red, while video lottery machine placement and play may be an integral business component of the bar or lounge, the premises cannot be designed solely for video lottery machine placement and play. The bar or lounge, in order to qualify for a video lottery establishment license, must also provide service and seating for the on-sale consumption of alcoholic beverages for patrons. Such seating within the bar or lounge must be available other than at video lottery machines and in relative proportion to the area reserved for machine placement. So you stated it's a bar, or it's a casino. It's not a bar. There's seating at video lottery terminals. There's no seating to drink alcohol, and you would be unwelcome if you came just to drink alcohol. How does this meet the intent of state law and regulation? How does this meet the intent of state law and regulation?
Councilman Knights, that's, you know, that's a, really a question for the legislature. I would say with regards to our particular locations, we are not set up, we are not set up to serve food and beverages to the general public. My understanding is, and I understand what the lottery ruling says, my understanding is that when the legislature put in place video lottery, they tied it together to, to beer and wine licenses, they had to do that. I don't know why they did, I was not around then. In 1986 or 1988, whenever that they did that. I would suggest to you, you know, that, that is not what we pay our employees to do. That's not what we, that's not what our players like. There are certainly seats around, we are not there to serve people and to have people proliferate alcohol and drinking. It's just not, it's not what we do. If that does not meet the intent of that video lottery ruling, then I think our particular locations and many others throughout the state are probably in violation of that declaratory ruling.
I would agree with that. So can we go to the, the other ruling? The rules are, and this is about guidelines to determine separate and distinct facilities. I can't show the floor plan, but you're familiar with the floor plan and the very open concept. If you walk through the Ellis Road location, do you think the average person thinks of it as four, or will think of it as five businesses or one giant casino?
Chairman, or excuse me, Councilman Knights, I don't know what the average person thinks. I can tell you what my client thinks. My client thinks it's a separate and distinct facility. My client is abiding by declaratory ruling 90-6. I, I honestly don't know what a person would think when they went into it. When we, as soon as we would tell someone that they cannot take alcohol from one area to the other, my guess is they would understand very, very quickly that they are not the same location. I do not know what they think with regards to casino-style atmosphere. I can tell you with regards to casino-style atmosphere, since we're talking about that, and so that seems to be the intent, if you look at declaratory ruling 90-6 and the exceptions that exist on there, that particular location, the drawing that you have meets everyone.
Well, we, we may disagree on that, but with the open floor plan, it, it says the rules are consistent with the legislative intent to prohibit a casino-type atmosphere by the imposition of the ten-machine limit for each licensed establishment. When you have such an open floor plan and they're right next to each other, do you think that really meets the spirit of not, and I, and when we, when I took that tour, I asked what would stop you from doing a hundred? And the applicant answered, nothing, just the market. So what is, what is the limit? Is it a hundred, is it two hundred, is it a thousand machines, as long as you carve up a building into enough rooms?
Councilman Knights, I understand that you want me to, what the answer you want me to give is. I can't tell you what the average person thinks, and I can't tell you what the upper limit is. The upper limit is set by the legislature. We're operating in the bounds of what, in my opinion, my legal opinion, what the declaratory rulings and what the statutory schemes say. I, I certainly, I, I certainly see where you're going with that, but it does me no good to, to agree with you and, you know, and I, quite frankly, I, you know, this was the type of discussion we had last week, I, I didn't think we were gonna have it again, but happy to, you know, happy to have it here in, in, in public. But I, I can't tell you what the average person thinks.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion, Councilor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think I would agree a bit with Councilor Bronco here on this. And I mean, we've been listening to this discussion here for a bit, for a couple of weeks. I mean, some laws on this subject may be a bit vague and maybe stretched a bit beyond what was originally intended. And I do think maybe a review of these sometime soon between city and state would be in order. But these clients in the past and up till now have had a good reputation, they appear to be abiding by the current laws and procedures. So as of today, again, I would agree that this is something we should probably look into a little more, as I know that's the intention of Councilor Knights, but as of tonight, I will be supporting him. Thank you.
Other discussion? Councilor McCarras?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, I review the potential plans in place there and the manner of operation for the new place. I'm struggling with the consistency of the manner of operation and the ordinance that was adjusted in 2019. And listening to the testimony from 2019 and reviewing all the testimony from 2019, it was clear the intention was two. Every conversation in 2019 was two, every testimony was two. Tonight, I will support two, the terminals for two, two of these addresses. And I'll vote in opposition to terminals for two of the addresses as well, to stay consistent with the ordinance change in 2019 and believe that we should have further conversation on that ordinance and also with the state moving forward.
Other discussion? Councilman Knights?
Yeah, I, I need to get on record that I will be voting no on these two pursuant to SDCL 427A 64, sub two, the proximity of the business to other establishment license for video lottery, and sub three, the type of business and manner in which the applicant proposes to operate it. As it relates to the proximity, you have forty machines literally within one facility. Yes, it's, it's four businesses, although I would consider that with this sort of an open floor plan with one bathroom and sharing essentially one, one cooler, really a fiction more than anything. And three, the type of business and the manner in which the applicant proposes to operate it. This, to me, makes it far too easy with four different casinos if you have one employee. Let's say they're in Casino One and somebody is in Casino Three with a beer. They walk over to Casino Four, they've now gone off premises. They're busy over in One, how are they supposed to be taking care of that? At least when we had two, at least if somebody was going one way or the other, the employee was there and that could take care of it. The other thing is in 2019, when we passed the regulations, what, what we talked about was a, a back room with a hall, with an opening so that an employee could go through a back room from one to the other. If you go to these casinos, you have common doors that people can go through and you literally just, it's a mouse maze of one door after another, after another, after another. And I, I'm not here to argue about the morality of video lottery, video lottery is legal, but clearly it was intended to be an accessory to a bar or a lounge with, with one particular license, even if they're serving beer for free and stuff. I mean, it's, it's on the edge, it's, it's iffy, but I wouldn't argue about it. But when you have a scale like this, it's obvious that this is not, this is not a bar, it's a, it's a casino. And with such an open floor plan, it just makes it far too easy to blur the lines and have potentially people going off premise. And I will tell you, I, I don't know whether that was the intent of, of the proponents at the time in private to do this, but they've twisted what we, what we intended very, very badly. And I'll just say, I was, I was one of the sponsors of that legislation and, and I screwed up, I just did. I, I should have, we talked about two and now we're seeing four and we have a five out there. I can see a six or a seven. And this is frankly just getting out of control and it's time to put our foot down and do a reset. And we need to go back and revisit our regulations and at least go back to the 2019 policy with, with separation. The other thing with their floor plan is you can, you can see from one to another in, in more than one place. You're supposed to have visual separation between the two. So, I mean, I can look at this and I can find all kinds of things where it's just clearly to me, the, we are not meeting the intent and spirit of state law. And we have the power under 427A 64 to act on the video lottery placement. So I'm going to oppose these and this is, I guess, my warning shot to any other applicant coming forward. If there's anything like this, I am going to oppose it. Thanks.
Other discussion, Councilor Cole?
I will also be opposing under 427A 64, criteria two and three, looking at the proximity of the business to other establishments, license for video lottery and the type of business and manner in which the applicant proposes to operate it. I have received several emails of residents living close by that have just implored myself and other counselors to be really thoughtful, not necessarily in the fact that it's video lottery, but just the number that we're allowing. And I think we do have to be thoughtful about that, so I will not be supporting it. Thank you.
Other discussion? Seeing none, could you remind me of the motion, clerk?
The motion, Council Chair, is to approve items thirty-two and thirty-four.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes. Oh, no, no, I'm in, no, sorry, no.
J, uh, hold on a second. Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knights?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
I have that motion passing six to two. Can I get a motion on thirty-six and thirty-eight?
So moved, Knights?
Second call.
Got a motion to approve items thirty-six and thirty-eight. Any further discussion on that? Councilman Knights?
I will oppose these two based on 427A 64, sub two and three, for the same reason stated in the previous motion.
Other discussion? Councilor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, back in nineteen, I didn't support the allowing two casinos coming together because I believe it's the intent of the legislature to be sole uses. But we've gone with that and I did warn of this turning into exactly what was happening, that it's gonna be three, four, or five, and I don't know where I stopped my exaggeration as part of the discussion. But I was there as well. I, I think two is a stretch for what the legislature intended. But I'm willing to stick with two, I voted for two, and I can't support a third and a fourth license for the same basic location. Obviously, I would never make the claim that this is not a suitable person or a suitable partnership. They've been nothing but open and good business people and told us exactly what they were doing. They've never tried to hide anything from us. When they didn't agree with our city ordinances, they came to us, we worked with them. We made the, the changes in 2019 to, to possibly fix and accommodate the industry. I think there are challenges to the industry. It's a, the bet limit's never been increased, the cost of doing business has increased. I think it's a tougher business. But I think there are plenty of operators that are doing just fine and until the legislature makes some changes. So again, I wouldn't make an argument for a suitable person, but I definitely make a, an argument for a suitable location. We just approved forty machines that are basically on, in the same premises. So going to thirty and then forty, I believe these two locations are not suitable for that type of operation to expand the number of video lottery machines. So I'll be voting no on this one.
Other discussion? Councilor Bronco?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to echo, I think Councilman Starr made some really great points. I reiterate that I think we need to take a good, close look at this and create a better policy, a smarter policy that's more clear, but that's not something that can occur right now. I think that Councilman Starr was absolutely right when he talked about how this is a great applicant, somebody who's been honest, willing to communicate with us. And I know we're kind of splitting the baby, but I think that approving two and, and at the current juncture is probably a way to kind of stumble forward until we have time to craft a better, clearer set of rules that hopefully is tolerable to the industry and does a great job for the citizens of Sioux Falls. So I'll be voting no.
Other discussion? Councilman Knights?
Really quick, I just want to make clear that I've had a really good personal relationship with the applicants and the attorney, Drew. So nothing personal. I, I will just say that we have had issues, not the only one, where rules, I believe, have been stretched and, and it's not necessarily the only applicant. There's some others in the industry where we give an inch and they take a mile. And so I'm going to be very, very careful going forward about what we're looking at in ordinances because it will be used to the advantage. I'm sorry to say it, but I've been watching this for six years. And so what we intended and what we're told are completely different things. I could get to where I could do the two-sy thing again with the right floor plan, not so open, and get back to where we were before potentially, I think even that is a stretch. I think honestly, what the legislature intended was something like a restaurant with a little room that was a casino, not these freestanding deals, but we're, we're kind of there. But I'm just gonna draw the line and say we could get maybe to two-sys, but we're not doing threes and fours and fives, period, end of issue. You come to me with that, there's gonna be a problem, so, thanks.
Other discussion? Let's go for the vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Baranko?
No.
Cole?
No.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
No.
Knights?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
The motion is failed, three to five. Next item, please.
Next item, item thirty-nine, new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Pilot Travel Center, seven, number seven sixteen, fifty-two oh one, North Granite Lane, Suite A. Item forty, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Pilot Travel Center, number seven sixteen, fifty-two oh one, North Granite Lane, Suite A. Item forty-one, new 2022 retail package, new package liquor license for Casey's General Store, number thirty, forty-nine, thirty-two, thirty-six, South Sycamore Avenue. Item forty-two, new 2022 package liquor license for Casey's General Store, twenty-four, sixty-four, five hundred, North Kewanis Avenue. Item forty-three, new 2022 package liquor license for Casey's General Store, number two, three, five, one, nine oh one, East Benson Road. Item forty-four, special one-day liquor licenses for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at Sanford Event Barn, twenty-five, ten, East Fifty-fourth Street, North, for weddings on September twenty-fourth, October first and twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. Item forty-five, special one-day liquor licenses for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at Kirkabee Over Stadium, twenty-seven hundred, South Lake Avenue, for games on September twenty-fourth and October first, twenty-twenty-two. Item forty-six, special one-day wine license for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated at MK Threads, two, 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 South Phillips Avenue, Friends of South Dakota Public Broadcasting, three hundred, North Dakota Avenue, Suite one oh four. Intoxa Bakes, four, twenty-one, North Phillips Avenue, J H and Sons, two, sixteen, South Phillips Avenue. Studio twenty twenty, three, eleven, South Phillips Avenue, Suite one hundred. Chelsea's Boutique, two, twenty, two, twenty, South Phillips Avenue. Mary's Mountain Cookies, seven oh one, North Phillips Avenue, Suite one twenty. Premier Playhouse, three, fifteen, North Phillips Avenue. Great Outdoor Store, two oh one, East Tenth Street. Home Porch Gifts, two seventeen, South Phillips Avenue. Friends of Sharing the Dream, four, twenty-one, North Phillips Avenue. Full Circle Book Co-op, one twenty-three, West Tenth Street. Borabell's, two oh six, South Phillips Avenue. Preaches, two twenty-five, East Eleventh Street, Suite one oh seven. Nyberg's Ace, two hundred, East Twelfth Street. Rayfield's Art and Framing, four thirty-one, North Phillips Avenue. Say Anything Jewelry, two twenty-five, South Phillips Avenue. Simply Perfect, four oh one, East Eighth Street, Suite one oh eight. J L G Architects, two thirty-two, South Main Avenue. Sticks and Steel, four oh one, East Eighth Street, Suite one eighteen. TH Gray, three thirty, South Phillips Avenue. Hannah Harvest, four twenty-one, North Phillips Avenue. Ethan Railroad Center, four oh one, East Eighth Street, Suite two hundred A. Hotel on Phillips, one hundred, North Phillips Avenue. Reach Literacy, twenty-one oh one, West Forty-first Street, Unit twenty-three, for an art and wine walk on October seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Item forty-seven, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for our wine bar and kitchen to be operated at Queen, Queen City Bakery, three twenty-four, East Eighth Street, for a special event on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And item forty-eight, special one-day liquor license for Sioux Falls Lutheran School, sixty-seven fifteen, South Bow Lane, for a fundraiser on October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
Jamie?
Good evening, Jamie Palmer again. I would like to request a motion to withdraw items thirty-nine and forty per the applicant's request. They have decided that they do not want to move forward with that particular quest, request for the beer and video lottery. So thirty-nine and forty on that. And otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on any of the remaining items.
Thank you. Anyone from public would like to discuss these items? Any disclosures to make, counsel? Councilor Jensen?
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw items thirty-nine and forty. Second.
There's a motion to withdraw thirty-nine and forty, can, discussion, counsel? Can we get a vote, please?
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knights?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to make a motion to approve items forty-one through forty-eight.
Second.
Councilor Jensen and Selberg to approve, discussion. Seeing none, let's go ahead and get a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Knights?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion is approved, eight to nothing. We go to the next page, please.
Item forty- Item forty-nine, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to enter into a conditional gifting and naming agreement for a future cash gift for the redevelopment of Nelson Park between the city of Sioux Falls and the Sioux Falls Skate Park Association sponsors the mayor.
Director Kearney.
Good evening, councilors. Appreciate the opportunity to present this item to you tonight. This item is a gifting and naming agreement that would allow for, uh, the construction of first class, first-class skate park in Sioux Falls. Would also honor a woman in Barb Iverson, who in many ways was a mentor to, an advocate for kids and especially kids who loved to skateboard, uh, by naming it the Barb Iverson Skate Plaza as proposed. This is another great example of a public-private partnership, uh, working with the Skate Park Association to leverage, uh, you know, our, our city dollars, uh, and, and bring in the private dollars to really make our dollars go farther. As proposed, the support, the Skate Park Association would give to, up to one point five million. The city would contribute eight hundred thousand in, as part of our twenty-twenty-three capital program for a total project of two point three million. Due to the city's dollars being involved in the project, the city would design, bid, and construct the proposed improvements, and then all the parties and get, uh, will be engaged in the design process and agree on a final concept before bidding. As a reminder, this is located in the northeast corner of Nelson Park. It will include, uh, plaza space, a street course, a bowl zone. Uh, the project will also include additional amenities on the site, including a walk, walking loop and pedestrian cadet connections, additional parking, tree plantings and landscaping, and art placement opportunities. Some of the other key points of the agreement include that the city will own and maintain the improvements for the useful life, which is anticipate, anticipated to be thirty years. Uh, and the project site is to be known as the Barb Iverson Skate Plaza at Nelson Park for the life of those improvements. And then as part of the agreement, uh, appropriate naming and recognition on the site will be provided. Uh, we've been to the Parks and Recreation Board and got their full support. We're here tonight, our second reading. Uh, subject to your approval tonight, uh, we'll go to design this fall, start construction in the spring of twenty-three, and then hopefully be, uh, open in the fall of twenty-twenty-three. Again, Walter Portz, a huge, uh, champion of this project, is in the audience tonight as well. Thank you all for your support of this project as well, uh, getting us to this point. And Walter and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Anyone from the public here wish to discuss this item? Councilors, question for staff. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Jensen.
Second call.
I have a motion by Jensen, second by Cole. Uh, any further discussion? Counselor Baranco.
Just wanted to, uh, commend you and your team. I think this is a terrific example of a public-private partnership that does do a terrific job of stretching taxpayer dollars while at the same time accomplishing something for the community. It's a great, um, activity for our young, our youth to, uh, be active and be healthy and be in the sunshine and not spend, uh, every waking hour in front of a computer screen. So I think it's a wonderful asset to the community.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Counselor Starr.
Just quickly, a suggestion, Director, maybe you should get some of the money from the Health Department rather than taking it out of your budget then, being it's such a healthy activity for our young folks. But again, I appreciate what the department's done to, to work with the skateboarding community and them to be active and involved. And we've done this on a number of projects and it's, it's been a good way to do it. I think your department's really led the, the charge on a number of those projects, whether it was ice skating or tennis or now skateboarding, and I'm sure I'm missing a couple. So I appreciate the, the, being able to work together and, and getting the public what they want for activities.
Thank you. Hats off to Walter and Mike Patton in our office. They did a great job.
Other discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item fifty, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations for Parks and Recreation sponsors the mayor.
Yeah, this is a tandem item, just simply gives us the, the budget authority to be able to move forward with design this fall, realizing that we don't have funding until next year, and Skate Park Association is advancing that to us to allow that to happen. So, questions?
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to discuss this item? Councilors, questions for staff?
Move approval.
Second.
A motion by Selberg, second by Jensen for approval, discussion. We have a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item fifty-one, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving a lease of city real property sponsors the mayor.
Good evening, Darren Fries, Public Works Water Division. As we touched on last week, uh, this is a new lease with an existing tenant. It's our standard lease form, and we would appreciate your support of this item.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Counselors, questions?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Moved by Neitzert, second by approval, discussion. We have a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion's approved, eight to nothing. Next item, please.
Item fifty-two, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving amendment number one to amended and restated water tank lease agreement number seventeen dash thirty-two nineteen, sponsors the mayor.
So this amendment, uh, it's no change in terms, no change in pricing. It's just simply modifying the equipment configuration. We'd appreciate your support.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Counselors, questions?
Move approval.
Second call.
I have a motion to approve by Selberg, second by Cole. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Boy, now we're cooking through these, huh? We're going to go, next item, please.
Item fifty-three, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at three oh three, West Twenty-sixth Street, from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT One Single Family Residential Traditional District, number one six nine seven six dash twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval, eight to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Private applicant, Jesse Buckmiller.
Good evening, counsel. Uh, Jason Bieber representing Planning and Development Services. Uh, this is an application, and the owner is Jesse Brockmiller. It's located at three oh three, West Twenty-sixth Street. It's about point zero nine acres in size. Uh, the, the purpose of this request is the applicant is looking at matching the correct zoning with the current use of the property as a single-family house.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Counselors, other questions? Look for a motion to set a s, date of second reading for Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two.
So move, Cole.
Second.
Moved by Cole, second by Jensen. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, can we have a vote?
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to nothing. Next item, please.
Item fifty-four, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at seventy-five hundred and seventy-six oh eight, South Hanson Place, from the AG Agriculture District to the RA One Apartment Residential Low Density and the RA Two Apartment Residential Moderate Density Districts, number one six seven nine four dash twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval, four to two. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Private applicant, Sarah Associates, Thad Roberts.
Uh, the applicant here is Thad Roberts, the owner is Jason Benson. This is located north of West Eighty-Fifth Street and then east of South, South Tallgrass Avenue. It's about eleven point seven one acres in size. Uh, the purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing two- and three-story apartment buildings on this property. Uh, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on August seventeenth from five thirty to seven at the Hersberg Explorer Elementary School just to the north of this parcel. We had roughly about twenty residents that were in attendance. Uh, most of them from the north side on shipped in there, the, the townhomes, and then, um, quite a few residents from the existing, uh, rural subdivision Bathos addition to the west. Uh, their concerns range from drainage, uh, traffic, and then also they were concerned about three-story apartments, uh, next to them. Uh, the area, area in the southeast corner of this parcel, as you can see with this concept plan, is actually going to be utilized, the city is going to be buying that for a detention pond to get some, uh, uh, some additional detention in that area. And then they'll keep that existing kind of creek, uh, detention area within the middle of the project, and that should alleviate drainage concerns. Traffic was another major concern. The applicant will have access to eighty-third Street, as you can see, going to the east to Bill Avenue, which will eventually lead down to eighty-fifth Street, which will be a lighted intersection, or the, or the residents can go all the way to the north to sixty-ninth Street, which is right by the Evera Heart Hospital. As part of the project, the developer, um, will actually have to pave west, or excuse me, South Hanson Place on the west side of the property. Uh, they would be, we would be looking for them to pave the east side of Hanson Place to give another access for these existing, or for these proposed apartments. And they would pave that all the way from eighty-fifth Street and then all the way north to the existing paved, uh, road on the north side of the property, as you can see in this aerial. Uh, the applicant, we also did have some concerns from those four plexes to the north. Uh, the applicant originally showed RA Two for the entire parcel, which does allow the three stories and forty-eight units per building. The applicant agreed, uh, to downzone that north half, the north of eighty-third Street to RA One, to better fit in with those existing townhomes to the north. Um, and that would only allow two, uh, two stories and twenty-four units per building. And then, uh, finally, that level C buffer yard would be required with any of the three stories buildings, and that would apply to not only the parcels that are, that within the city limits, but we also do have a single-family parcel in the southwest corner of the property. Uh, they would be required to buffer, uh, to that specific, a single-family use also. And that would include a thirty-foot setback, four-foot berm or six-foot fence, and then forty units of landscaping for every one lin, one hundred lineal feet. As we all know, uh, future plans of eighty-fifth Street is currently, we have a four-lane divided highway all the way over to Tallgrass. Future plans of that is to continue that four-lane divided highway all the way over till the inter, the proposed interchange on twenty-nine, which was just announced, um, that looking to break ground for that as early as next year. And as we've, we've seen with our, um, interchanges on to twenty-nine, those intersections get very large with commercial and multifamily uses, and we handle a lot of traffic on those arterial streets.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to discuss this item? Counselors, questions for staff? Yes, Counselor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Bieber, could we put two, the two stipulation, put them, list them as, uh, stipulations, one and two, that it would be, the, the north part would be RA One, um, the downzoning, and the second stipulation be a level C buffer yard? Is that net? It's relevant, but I'm, I'm, the downzoning part, I'm, I'm thinking that I need as, or we need as a stipulation, the level C buffer yard, I'm not sure that I need that as a stipulation, but I might want it.
This is, uh, this would be the proposed, um, ordinance that is in front of you that shows the RA One already on there. So that would be required, he wouldn't be able to go larger than the two stories and twenty-four units. The level C buffer yard is already required if he decides to do those three-story apartments next to, uh, there's an existing single-family house he can kind of see in the middle there. And then, as indicated, there's one that's outside of city limits on the corner. So they would already have to be required to do that as part of the ordinance.
Okay, so it's covered with the
Yep.
agreements that they made with the neighbors, so
Yep.
it's in stone or as much as it can be. Thank you.
Other questions? I've looked for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved, Jensen.
Second, Starr.
I got a, by Jensen and Baranco. No, second by Starr, excuse me. Put new batteries in my hearing aid. Any discussion?
Yes, can I, Mr. Chair? Um, Jason, I had one more question.
Sure.
Will we see the neighborhood here for a second reading?
I was
they held back tonight?
I was very surprised that they did not show up tonight. I was informed that they were coming, and then I informed the applicant to be here too, so I'm pretty surprised that they're not, um, coming. I know the gentleman that has the house in the southwest corner couldn't be here tonight, but we've been in communication with him on possibly even maybe purchasing his property as part of this whole project and, and doing some other things with that, so. Yes, I was surprised they weren't here tonight.
Other discussion? How about a vote, please?
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item fifty-five, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located north of East Madison Street and east of North Veterans Parkway, from the RD Two Townhome Residential Suburban District to the RCD Residential Cluster Development, BUD, RT Two Townhome Residential Traditional Districts, number one six nine five seven dash twenty twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, eight to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two. Private applicant, Nielsen Development LLC, Kelly Nielsen.
So the applicant and owner here is Kelly Nielsen. Uh, this is located north of East Madison Street and east of North Veterans Parkway. It's about nine point seven acres inside, size, excuse me. As you kind of, uh, guys were briefed at your informational meeting, this would be the rezoning that would go along with the proposed TIF that our office is looking to bring to you guys in October, along with a development agreement as part of, of that TIF application. So, uh, the applicant is proposing, um, to rezone this property to do an accessible housing subdivision. As you kind of heard, uh, they're looking to do thirty-nine single-family homes ranging in size from nine hundred and seventy-eight square feet to roughly twelve hundred square feet. And then each home will have a single-stall garage and a twenty-foot wide driveway. Uh, the, the, to the south and west of the single-family homes will be that row of twin homes, and those will be roughly eleven hundred square feet and include two bedrooms and two baths on the main floor, and then they would have an unfinished, uh, basement for the homeowner to build, uh, equity it, down the line. And they will also include a two-stall garage. These are kind of some pictures of some of the layout that, uh, Kelly's looking at do, to do. Uh, Unit A would be the smaller unit that would, uh, he's looking to target around two hundred and thirty-two thousand. Unit B is a little bit of a larger, single-family house, those would be closer to the twelve hundred square feet. Um, and those were somewhere around three hundred thousand. And then the twin homes, he's looking to target around three hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and as indicated, Dustin and the applicant are looking to bring that TIF forward for, for two readings in October for you. And then this is a rendering with one of our, uh, employees in our office to kind of give you an idea of what the development could look like when it's all built out.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to discuss this item? Counselors, questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two?
So moved, McCorris.
Second call.
Moved by McCorris, second by Cole. Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item fifty-six, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter one sixty zoning, subchapters one sixty point zero zero five, one sixty point one zero four, one sixty point one one three, one sixty point one one four, one sixty point one nine four, one sixty point two six two, one sixty point four zero two, one sixty point four eight zero, one sixty point four eight five, one sixty point four eight eight, one sixty point five one seven, one sixty point five one eight, one sixty point five five one, one sixty point five seven two, one sixty point five seven three, one sixty point five seven four, one sixty point five seven five, one sixty point five nine one, one sixty point five nine eight, and one sixty point six seven zero. The Planning Commission recommends approval eight to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Sponsors the mayor.
So these are our zoning ordinance updates that we typically like to do every sixteen to eighteen months, kind of find some things, maybe with shape places that that isn't working or maybe some changes we need to make. As we presented these to you at informational meeting back in July twenty-six, relatively the same proposals then. There's quite a big lapse in that, but that's because of the budget and stuff. We weren't able to get in front of you then. But really want to update these every year to every sixteen months, really just to see things that aren't working and and really provide the best possible solutions within shape places. Sounded like a lot with what Tom, Tom said in his agenda item update. Really, it's a lot of house cleaning stuff, but we'll go through some of the major things that that we feel like you guys should be aware of and that are maybe some changes that the the public needs to know about, too. So really, some updates and definitions, parking stalls. We're proposing to allow stacking and queuing spaces to count towards parking minimums. As we go away from large parking lots and more parking than what's required, which is kind of being the industry standard to become less parking, we're really, and really what we saw during COVID, it was really the need for less parking spaces onsite but more queuing spaces. So we thought, why don't we allow them to have more queuing spaces, and then those can count for their parking minimums? And it's kind of a win-win for everybody. Frontage, just the definition is to expand to future right-of-way. For if there's right-of-way not platted, but we're proposing right-of-way in the future, we'd like to still count that as frontage. Townhome, we really want to put a definition in there for townhomes, that a townhome is each individual unit separated by a property line, and then those would be allowed under the RD two zoning district. If it's four, six, eight units that we've seen that are actually all rentals, we would then require those to be bumped up to the RA one and really consider those more apartments because we feel they're a little bit more intrusive. And then add Veterans Parkway to the definition of a highway. Currently, it's in there as SD eleven, and that doesn't exist. We have Veterans Parkway now. And then we would like to add Solar Farms as a new use under the UT two form. One of the things we're looking at is currently the MD three has no height limit except when it's adjacent to a single-family or townhomes. That becomes problematic because the definition of adjacent in our zoning ordinance means it could actually be across a right-of-way. So this apartment could be separated by a thousand feet, and it still could only be three stories in height. So we were proposing a hundred and fifty feet, and that would be from the building wall to the property line of the adjacent single-family and townhome forms. Just to give you an idea, currently the BCF three form, which would be like large institutional uses, those only have to be a hundred feet from single-family and townhome forms. So we're proposing a little bit more than that. And then if you, if you get taller than that, fifty-five feet, that's when you have to provide actually a larger setback, two additional feet for every height you go up. That'll allow them to be farther away from existing single and townhomes. RE one, this was one of the things we found, that this is a picture of a use that's kind of by Forty-Ninth and Western. It was, been a, I think, a yarn store forever. Lady wanted to go in there and open up kind of a nutrition store, and then she wanted to live in the upper level. Currently didn't allow you to live in the upper level, level of a C one zoning district. We didn't understand why. We figured it'd be better for the property owner to live above it and then run the store. So we're proposing to a residential on the second floor. Still only allows two stories, and that will hopefully spur some other of these neighborhood commercial that we've seen in some of our areas. Solar Farm, like I said, we wanted to add a solar farm to utilities for existing and future development. This is a project that Poet did up there, where they're actually generating power with the solar farm for their, for the use of their office building that's right next door. We would like to be a little proactive and and add that as a definition if we get any more uses for solar farms within the city. And those would only be allowed in like industrial and commercial and really high, higher use areas. Landscape standards, one of the things we want to really preserve, and especially with Veterans Parkway, we all know, we all know it's getting built, so it's becoming a reality. Currently, we don't have any standards for commercial and industrial to buffer to Veterans Parkway. We have it for residential, to protect those residential. We're proposing to require commercial and industrial uses to provide trees, one for every fifty feet on Veterans Parkway, and any highway, interstates would be included to really protect our corridors and get us some more landscaping on some of these areas around the city and help screen some of these industrial uses. And then buffer yards, this is one of the things that we found is, this is an example of a car wash that's over at the old, I think it was Timberline Steakhouse on Forty-First Street. They put in a car wash. We had neighborhood meetings. A lot of the neighbors wanted to see all coniferous trees along there instead of what we require bushes, coniferous deciduous, deciduous trees. So they had to go for an alternative site plan. This would give the ability for our director to sign off on something like this, to to say, I don't want to do all, are all bushes, or I want to do all coniferous trees. Currently, we require approval. Now he'd be able to do that administratively, which is, that gives us a little bit more of an ability to work with the neighbors on what they want to see, because it seems like everywhere we have buffer yards, somebody wants to see something different. This will give us a little more flexibility, as required. Same landscape units, often provide all that, but it would give us a little bit more ability to work with the neighbors on it. And then just wanted to let you know, we presented this to the home builders and the multi-housing association, and they expressed zero concerns with our proposed amendments. And I know Councilmember Nitzer may have one to amend and possibly adding one, so definitely entertain those.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to discuss this item? Counselors, questions for staff? Seeing none, entertain a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October fourth, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved, Nitzer.
Second call.
Got a motion by Nitzer, second by Cole. Hearing none, let's go for the vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero. On to our next item was general public input. General public input in tonight's agenda, as a reminder, the input of this portion will be lasting no more than three minutes per person. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that did not appear earlier in the regular agenda. At this time, I'd invite anybody from the general public that wishes to make comments to come forward, please.
I am Brian Burge out of Beersford, South Dakota, candidate for District Sixteen Senate. I've just been spending some time going canvassing some of the local races, or local commissions and seeing how the interaction is between the legislative level and the local level of government, as if I get a chance, there'll be writing affecting those laws. And I just want to commend you on the quality of interaction between those and sticking with the principles of our constitution of firm affirmation of principles allows for good laws to be put in place. So look forward, if I get into office, to interacting as Sioux Falls is partially in Lincoln County, which is where I would represent, build that connection and being a resource to help aid in good effort. Thank you.
Any other public input?
Good evening. Chester D. Young. Tonight I'm going to talk about the city's rules on building a street. The city requires that the adjacent property owners put all utilities in, build a street, and then turn it over to the city for maintenance. I said all utilities. That means sewer main, sewer service stubouts, water service stubouts. What happened on Grant Street? Well, when my parents bought the first piece of property, they bought four back in the early seventies, there was nothing to the east of them, and they were sitting at Grant and Detroit, okay? At that time, Taylor Street ran from Sickmore to Detroit, came down to my folks' house at Grant, and it stopped, except for a little driveway going back to LaSalle and Grant Street. All houses out there were on septic system. In the early eighties, the state, to meet federal clean water requirements, had to install sewer main out there. When they installed sewer main, they had to block the roads off. How are those people in there, twenty-some houses supposed to get in and out? The city requested a special easement for my folks to get in and out. They granted it. The city talked to this, my folks, and easily got it. There's no problem. The city never tried to do this when they're trying to do their work. In the nineties, when Mr. Adler wanted to sell his property at LaSalle and Grant, he had to run sewer and water.[1631.53]